Called order, the city council work session for CDV's Grand Forks for Tuesday, December 11th, 2018 is now five o'clock. City clerk, please call roll.
Mayor Steve Gander, Council President Mark Holstead.
Here.
Council Vice President Chad Grassel.
Here.
Council Members Clarence Vedder.
Here.
Mike Parkshavinsky.
Here.
Tim Reapell.
Here.
Henry Twetton.
Here.
Mark DeMers.
Present.
That's Turner McCorm. The mayor apologizes he is on his way. He is on the highway right now and it seems like, it sounds like it's really icy out there, so we're gonna start on, we're gonna move the agenda on so you can be here for the discussion. Number two, we're gonna move that to number one, review the draft of the bike and pedestrian plan. Hyro?
Thank you. My name is Hyro Via Farah and here before you today representing the MPO. And the purpose of this presentation is to first provide you with some insights on the development of the bicycle and pedestrian element and to request your consideration by seeking approval of, a preliminary approval of the element that we are now considering. So what I will do today is first review the draft document. You may have received a link to see the draft, complete draft document on the web. The purpose is also to create awareness on some of the preliminary planned recommendations and policies that need to be adopted and also to afford you the opportunity to get involved with what we are doing. This is very important because at the end, it is elected officials like you, the ones that will help the MPO and the local government to secure dedicated funding. Part of securing that dedicated funding is also to gain the approval of the element that is under your consideration, so. Who has been working on this planned element? For the last two years and a half, a number of people have been involved. We have the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. We have also the Bicycle, the Pedestrians and Greenway Advisory Committee. This committee is mainly made of people that use both the Greenway and also enjoy other kind of wintery related activities on the, on the, on the way. There is a Safe Kids,旱 Pedestrians and Wheel Sport Safety Committee. They are also being involved in that. So here are the, just for your information, the names of the officials and city, local government and state government staff that has been directly guiding MPO staff in advancing this particular planned element. And we extend our appreciation for the dedication of their time to pursue this. A number of public involvement activities took place during the update. One of them was we produced two surveys to measure the feelings about bicycle and pedestrian activities in the city through the two communities. We also engaged in a bicycle and pedestrian training for staff and it was also open to the public. There was another seminar on Complete Streets as well, open to the public and was meant for the city staff. A number of printed articles were distributed through the two local newspapers and now that they are here, we, as an MPO, we are grateful to their support because it is through these articles that we can enhance our coverage and people get to know exactly what's happening. We located a number of displays boards where people could write at their own leisure, exactly what kind of comments they would like to ask to heed their advice and also to pay more attention. We did a bicycle audit where users and staff rode bikes around the city to have first, kind of a first time look at what was happening on the ground. Later, with the participation of the Police Department from the city of East Grand Forks, we attended the Ice Cream Cone. That was a very important opportunity for us to get, not only to know the officers, but also to know what they do in terms of community awareness and outreach activities. We also invited by Parks and Recreation, we went and attended the healthy and fit fair community. So a number of public involvement activities have taken place and the MPO has made every effort really to be there on the forefront. This plan, this element that we are asking you to please consider and support, it is part of the Long Range Transportation Plan. The Long Range Transportation Plan is made of three elements. The street and highways that is under approval, the transit development that has been approved, and this one, the bicycle and pedestrian that is now considered, is under consideration by you. The MPO is legally required to produce an update, develop an update and implement fiscally constrained plans on a every, regular basis every five years. So this element was originally adopted in the year 2013 and five years later, 2018, now we are seeking your, your approval. The law of the land that is setting this particular plan is called FAST, which is Fixing America's Surface Transportation Act, and it was enacted in the year 2015. So all our plans need to abide and be in accordance to this particular law in order for us to, as localities, be able to receive federal grants. As a requirement by the Feds, we, the MPO, needs to follow everything that we do encompass these ten particular kind of goals and objectives. These are national objectives that we need to also heed and advise. Part of the analysis was also to study some of the barriers or impediments that sometimes make it difficult for people to navigate actually as pedestrians or bicyclists in a very direct manner from one point to another. There are some obstacles, natural as well, that we have really grown used to, but it's important for us to see them and to see that sometimes they have the potential to impede the ability for people to actually go directly from one destination to another. So they are listed there and some recommendations are there. On part three of this particular element, we reviewed land use patterns in the two cities and zoning issues. Then we went ahead and studied state and local laws that are the ones pertinent to fostering bicycle and pedestrian activities, particularly in some downtown neighborhoods. And then we inquire about pedestrian needs. One survey or a number of surveys that were very important for us were the Parents and Guardians surveys. Those are conducted in cooperation with Safe Kids and they are done, the ones, our sample covers about thirteen schools in the cities. Unfortunately, the East Grand Forks, it is still pending, but the ones that we got from Grand Forks tell us that there is a lot of safety around the proximity to the schools that fortunately we don't have in the cities. Accidents involving fatal or fatalities and not to rest on our laurels, but at least we can say confident that every effort is being made by the cities, including the police departments in both cities, to assure residents that there is a lot of safety and parents can basically rest at ease when they send their kids to the schools. And this is as a result of the crash analysis that we, we conducted. So we did an analysis of all the land uses in the two cities and exactly because we want to improve access, mobility and improved connectivity. So in that analysis, just, I'm just giving you a sample here. If you see the solid lines are part of the existing network. Now, whenever we see vacant or empty spaces are the places where we need to consider seriously closing those gaps. So an analysis was done and as a result of that, some new proposed facilities are incorporated in the map. So you can see them here. So what we did was, number one, we want to classify all the particular projects in, in three levels, short term. The projects that are carryover from the past and the proposed facilities. So as a result of these proposed facilities, now we have a new map and you can see on the dotted lines, those are the facilities that will be incorporated in the next upcoming bicycle and pedestrian plan. And if you see them, just wanna bring you back again. Just a little for, just to give you an idea, you see this empty expanse of land, but now every effort is being done to try to assure people larger level of connectivity. Important this is to bring because the Greenway continues being a center of attraction. It's probably the largest greenery that we have in our city and it's a highly, highly sought after place where people wants to, to recreate. And connecting that, basically what we are doing is extending all the parks in the both cities into one particular kind of integrated recreational mass. So that's where we are. And our recommendations will be available probably in about a week. And the purpose of the recommendations are to improve safety and comfort of the users and the main is to increase the existing pedestrian network and bicycle system and to enhance access and connectivity for all the users. So this is what we have for your consideration and the MPO would certainly appreciate if we can gain your support by attaining your, your approval of this particular element.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Are you done?
Yes.
Do you have a question, Mike?
Just, yes, comments mostly. Appreciate all the work that, that you've done with this. It's a, it's a vital and necessary part of getting funding for our pedestrian transportation system and, and I absolutely do support it and will vote for it. Comment is, we spend a lot of time and money doing this planning. We spend millions and millions of dollars installing bike paths and all kinds of opportunities for people to jog and run and ride their bikes and skateboard and whatever they wanna do. Still many people insist on doing their jogging in the driving lanes of our roads. I've had too many close calls where someone this time of year is out jogging without bright clothing, dark, and I've almost hit them. And thousands of people get killed every year being struck by vehicles, probably because they used bad judgment in where they were walking. It's usually not the driver's fault. And I just wanna say to pedestrians, you're gonna have a bad day if you get hit by a car, but the person driving that car is gonna be affected for life because of the bad decision you made. And it just bothers me that we spend all this money for pedestrians and there's a certain segment of the population that insists, that mean River Road is a classic example. Ten feet from River Road is a very nice bike path. Why do you have to run down the road? So anyway, that's my soapbox and thank you, Hyro, for the presentation.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. DeMers?
Thank you, Mr. President. Same thing. I think the group that puts these things together is doing and will continue to do a great job. My take, or my insight into this is that we have to realize where we are and instead of looking at this from a transit and functionality kind of option first, I think we should look at it, and we have, from a recreation standpoint first. I think you're gonna have more people utilizing the system from a recreational standpoint, which will increase the transit users, which will increase, you know, the walking that works and all those type of things. But, and the reason why I bring that up, you know, Goals Four, Five and Ten really address those. And I think we should add, you know, we talked about the Greenway, we talked about the existing network. We should add the Red River, Red Lake River corridor. I know they've been working on the, the actual rail, or the river, you know, using that. It's a, it's a designated trail right now, using that as a waterway, but also we can leverage that. That goes like a mile each way from the river, so we can utilize some of that to get trails that access that. I would think to, to work on the expansion and the interconnectivity of our recreational trails would, would be more beneficial than focusing on internal, you know, routes to work because I think before you have people that are gonna do that, they're gonna go, they're gonna get on a bike, they're gonna pedal on the weekend and then they're gonna like it and then they'll do that. So I can see, I think that we have great opportunities on the north side of the Red Lake River for recreational trail. I think we have the opportunity to connect the Greenway Trail on the, near the Red, Red River to the recreational trail that we have on the south side of the Red Lake River. I think that would be a, a huge boom for us. So looking at those type of things, finding ways that we can further enhance those Greenway-like corridors would, is gonna be the, the inspiration to move more into the transit type of function.
Certainly. And this is a personal view. I'm very much impressed by reviewing one of your latest ordinances where the city of East Grand Forks has decided to have particular kind of sidewalks depending the land use. This is a real accomplishment because through these reviews, there are areas, particularly the industrial areas, where no sidewalks being built, but now with your new ordinances, they will build. So that take a little bit away pressure from people using the car weight to, to be either walking or riding bikes. So that's, is a...
They still will.
Sorry, sir?
They still will.
No, it's a, but on the other hand, educational campaigns for pedestrians are also part of the endeavors and those are part of the recommendations. So we will strive to heed your advice and incorporate your comments in the final document.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The mayors have any comments at all? Did you have anything to add, sir? Did you have some questions?
I'm Steve Greshesky.
Do you wanna come up to the mic? You can sit right here if you want.
Yeah, I'm Steve Greshesky. I live on 1502 Fourteenth Avenue Southeast and corner of Greenway Boulevard. And the sidewalks were poured there this year. They aren't completely finished, I guess a dirt work all the way through, but my question is, the city has clean sidewalks on Bigland Road, both sides, taxpayers' money. Thirteenth Avenue is cleaned by taxpayers' money and Fourteenth Street, right to the north of me, that's cleaned by taxpayers' money. Now, when we got notified about sidewalks being built, why didn't they let the property owners know that we had to clean them? And it's not justified for us to pay taxpayers' money and clean our own and pay taxes on somebody else's property. That's not justified. I would like to know some answers and I know down Greenway Boulevard, they wanna know answers. All the people do, but...
Mr. Murphy, do you wanna?
We do need answers on there.
Yeah, I guess I can, as far as which, which streets are currently cleaned by city personnel, I can't answer that off the top of my head. I know I have had some discussions with Reed about that and Mr. Storedall about what, so I guess that particular aspect, I'll leave it up to them as far as which streets are cleared and which ones are not as far as with the, the city personnel. I guess the other aspect of it is with sidewalks, unless they're dedicated a trail, all of the sidewalks in the city are cleared by the adjoining property owners. We have had made some exceptions in the past for ones that are, for the safe routes to school and those that are designated as trails. And those are the ones that are specifically cleared by city personnel. However, all the rest of the sidewalks in, in this, in the city, and it's pretty common throughout the state, that if, if there's a sidewalk out there, the adjacent property owner cleans it. That's been our ordinance for, for many, many years. I guess we didn't really didn't have much discussion or debate as far as when that was being put in, as far as what should be notified, whether, to make it clear that the individual property owners would be shoveling those or snowblowing those. That has just been our policy for, for many, many years. I guess, I didn't, at the time, I didn't see it as, as something that really needed to be clarified, but, so if that, I guess, could you, would you be able to tell, remember what streets those were? If, I know Bigland, parts of Bigland, we do clear all on Bigland.
That's the safe routes to school, right, along Bigland?
Yep.
Yeah, to add to Mr. Murphy, Murphy's comments, I, without having the map in front of me, I couldn't tell you exactly what streets and blocks our, our department cleans, but all of the, all of the sidewalks that we clean, basically from, I think it's Fifth or Sixth Streets Southeast, all the way down Bigland South to the corner of Greenway Boulevard and then the East and West Route that we do there that gets to the schools. Those are all, to my understanding, the reason we clean those is because they're considered a safe route to school. And that was the direction of the council years ago, is that we needed to maintain those because they were not in the, the front yard or the side of someone's property. And that's been our direction so far with the new sidewalks that have been put in, is that they're not, it's not city-owned property and it's not on a safe route to school that is in, in, in the same light that the, the sidewalk up and down Bigland is, which is why we are, haven't cleaned them and don't have the time to.
Same kids walk from Greenway Boulevard up to, Bigland Road up to Greenway Boulevard. There's just as many kids using that as where I'm at. So what's the difference?
Because the difference is, well, what one is?
I think they should be cleaned by the city the same way.
Is there, is there a way that maybe you guys can get with him and go over the map with him?
Sure.
Go talk it through. And Mr. DeMers, do you have something?
I just wanted to say, I, I don't know why the stuff on the, what would be the west or, west side of Bigland, if you wanna call it that, that got included. I, because I wasn't here when that part went through, but I was intimately involved in the, the planning and the, the work that was done on the east side of Bigland. And the reason why we agreed to do it for that one wasn't because it was safe routes. It was because it's literally in people's backyards and like, and there's nobody over there. There's no driveways over there. Well, there's one house, I think, that faces Bigland from six till you get to the, to the school. You know what I mean? So I think they're like, there's no, you know, we weren't gonna, there's no access to get, they'd have to go out onto James and out and around and to get back there to, to do that. So that was why that one was. It didn't have anything to do with safe routes. It didn't have anything to do anything else. It was just purely an access issue. I can't speak to why any of the other ones were done that way.
If I remember correctly, I think it depends where, where some of the funding was. If it was some of the safe route to school funding we've, we've worked on.
Nancy?
No.
The one on the west side, all of those neighbors were notified that they were required to move snow off of those sidewalks. It was a policy of the Parks and Rec at the time that if you were going down one side of Bigland all the way to the middle school, that rather than coming back on the clean sidewalk, they would just come back up on the other side. Again, both were safe routes to school grants, a hundred percent. At the time of application, the first one especially because it was in a backyard was the reason why we agreed to move the snow off of that one. The one on the other side, the city agreed to simply because it didn't make sense for them to drive back on a clean sidewalk. They just came back on the other side of Bigland. The rest of them, there are new sidewalks going in all the time. We have not had to notify any of those property owners that they are required to move snow off of them because it's been a city ordinance since the seventies. And quite honestly, those people are also being special assessed to pay for those sidewalks. So this is just a different type of funding source. So it has, it has nothing to do with the safe route specifically. We have a lot of safe routes. We have maps that lead up to that. We have them on the north side of East Grand Forks. We do not move snow on any of the sidewalks on the north side. It was just that there was a resolution passed by the council to do specifically the Bigland Road and the small section of Thirteenth that leads to South Point because at the time, they were allowing us, the people that owned that property were allowing us to put snow there. So we agreed to move the snow off the sidewalks.
Why is Fourteenth Avenue?
Fourteenth is no longer being, having snow removed from it. The Robertson properties, they have hired...
It has been removed twice.
Well, they have, they hired their own person to move snow. I know that.
It was a city, I live on the corner. It was a city, proper vehicles cleaning it.
And that, yeah. And that may be a misunderstanding of who was cleaning it at the time, but it, they are not part of these safe routes sidewalk. And they are aware of that and they've been notified of that.
And that's been cleaned ever since they were, started cleaning from Bigland Road. I'm there eleven years now.
And maybe Reed can explain that.
Since the sidewalk was built.
Yes.
Part of that goes, because it was city property.
Yes, it was.
I mean, that was city property until Robertson built on it last year.
Yeah, as far as, as far as the snow events we've had this year...
The houses were on Fourteenth Avenue to the north. There are two homes there.
As far as the snow events that we've had this year and, and exactly what we're cleaning, I wasn't able to get together with, with Chad Swedside, our Parks Foreman, to see exactly what we're doing there. To Mr. DeMers' point, previous and previous winters, we have cleaned, if you turn off of Bigland and turn west, we have cleaned that section where the Robertson townhomes are in, in previous years. I was under the understanding that we weren't doing that anymore because it's not city property anymore. But we use a lot of seasonal help in our, in our equipment moving that and it's very possible that it was just a misunderstanding in what exactly they're supposed to be doing on that end. And that, that can certainly be addressed. But to, to my understanding of our snow removal practices is our department is responsible for any sidewalks that are owned by the, are adjacent to city-owned properties. Of course, any of our trails or to Mr. Murphy's point, any of the areas designated as bike paths. And then the sidewalk is going south on Bigland towards the middle school and turning to go east towards South Point Elementary. Those are the only, only sidewalks that, that the Parks and Rec Department at this current time has responsibility in cleaning for.
Yes, one thing, I guess I wasn't exactly sure which streets are, if you're talking about the one directly by the Robertsons there, yeah, that, that had been cleaned in the past. Over now with that being in there, they had hired their own. They're supposed to be doing that themselves. So if it was done by a city that was in, that was in error, it could have been...
But them sidewalks have been cleaned ever since they've been built by the city because they were city property cleaning them.
Yeah. Once those homes were built, no longer. Yep.
Can we maybe set up a time with him to get together, to show him the map, show him what we will do, what we won't do, and we'll get it all straightened out?
Yeah, if you could get, maybe just get his phone number from him real quick.
Two one eight?
You don't have to say it over the thing.
Two one eight, three nine nine, zero one two five. And I think all the other property owners should be notified along Greenway Boulevard. They have to clean them now. Because we've talked about it, few of us together here, and they feel the same way I do.
Appreciate you coming in and bringing in to our attention. So I appreciate you coming in and bringing in to our attention. And Mr. Murphy and we'll be getting ahold of you, you know, go over the mapping if, Mr. Hutton and we'll go through it with you. Make sure that what's supposed to be done and what's not supposed to be done is...
Okay. One more issue I wanna bring up is our dog law, laws in this, East Grand Forks. I talked to the mayor last summer, Police Department... Police Department came out, that helped.
Good.
But there's dogs running around. I can tell you where this dog is coming from, and I told the police department where it was coming from, and that same dog is still running around.
Lot more cats running around.
They never learn. I think the dog laws in this city are, what, 1984? I think they should be brought up a little bit newer.
Then you're always gonna be, you're always gonna be back to the question of enforcement and, uh, and policing a neighborhood for a stray dog is a, is a very difficult thing.
Yeah.
We'll do our best if a dog is, is stray and off a leash and whatnot, the police will bring them in, but, uh, it's not the number one thing for them. They have other, other things.
I understand that. It did help.
If you see the strays, feel free to call us, and if we have an officer available, we'll be glad to come over.
Yeah, give a call.
I know where this dog is coming from, and I think that dog should be either picked up from the homeowner, if they can't take care of it, and gotten rid of.
When that dog is out and about, go ahead and call the police department, and they'll come on through the neighborhood if they can, right on, right at that time. So we want to work with you on that.
That dog was running around there last night, because I seen him. But I can't take pictures because by the time I get outside and whatever.
But you can see then how hard it is for us to pick up the dog if you can't get a picture of the dog. It's not an easy thing. But we'll sure do our.
I know the homeowners, so I think they should be either told to get, take care of the dog or get rid of them.
Yep.
Can you give me one call tomorrow or send me an email, either one, with the information on the owner, and I can try to contact?
Hyro, before you go. Call. I, I should. Call the chief tomorrow. I should fire off.
Okay.
Hyro, thank you. Hyro pays attention to all kinds of people moving through our community. He thinks about complete streets, and they include sidewalks, and they include bicycles, and they include all the public transportation and, and of course, cars. Um, so thank you for getting your head around all of that so that we pay attention to safely and, and comfortably moving people through our community. Um, his office is right by mine, and I come and go a lot, and he corrals me in and we visit and, and laugh and have a good time. But you have a really good mind for the work that you're doing.
Thank you.
And I can see your passion for it, and it's gonna pay, of, of course, great dividends to us over time. And thank you also to Reed and the Park Department because I took a run on the trail back along my house, and it was bone dry. That was just yesterday. So they're doing a nice job keeping our trails clean and dry, so thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir, for coming in. Appreciate it.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Okay. Well, we'll back up to number one, discussion on hosting Governor's Fishing Opener.
Right, well, good evening. I'm Stephanie Bernstrom. I'm with the Greater Grand Forks Convention and Visitors Bureau, and thank you so much for having me here this evening. Julie Rieger, Executive Director, sends her apologies. She was called away at the last moment. So I want to talk to you a little bit about the Governor's Fishing Opener. Uh, you have a packet before you from the C V B. We have, uh, the request for proposal from the Governor's Fishing Office. This is for the 2020 Governor's Fishing Opener. They obviously don't have one prepared yet for 2021. And you'll also see a list of our services as well as our visitor guide, so feel free to take a look at that. And you can always contact, uh, me at the office if you have any further questions. Uh, this is coming to our attention because we actually had a representative from Explore Minnesota Tourism visit our office a couple of months ago and asked why we hadn't considered hosting the Governor's Fishing Opener. And frankly, we hadn't because although there are some walleye available, uh, the Governor's Fishing Opener is Walleye Opener Weekend, and it's considered typically to be a walleye event. And this time of year in Grand Forks, particularly on the rivers, is a really good time for catfish. So I took a really close look at the request for proposal from Minnesota Tourism. There are a couple mentions of walleye in there, but mostly it pertains to, uh, eating some walleye dinner during the opener. And I, I had a call with, uh, Megan in the Governor's Fishing Opener office and kind of pitched what we could do in Grand Forks, East Grand Forks primarily, and, and that was always an issue for us too, because, um, Minnesota Tourism is pretty protective of, of your cities, and we feel like they don't always give East Grand Forks as much attention as we feel the community deserves. So we were very excited that they considered East Grand Forks as a host community for this. So I talked to them about East Grand Forks. I talked to them about our river access and the unique aspect of being located in somewhat of an urban area, having our downtown area and potentially launching there. But the number one question was, how would you feel if the governor went out there and caught a big old catfish instead of a walleye? And I explained that, you know, you could be out there on the river for hours, and maybe the governor gets a pike or a small walleye or something, but I can almost guarantee you get the governor and these members of the media out on the river, and you're gonna have some pretty incredible fishing. This is a peak time for catfish, and if anybody's pulled a 20-plus pound catfish out of the river, it's, it's fun. I've enjoyed it. Uh, they're impressive looking. The whole purpose of the Governor's Fishing Opener is to shine some attention on the host community and recreation throughout Minnesota. And, you know, every year, yes, the location moves, but you're kind of looking for the same thing on your lakes. It's not often on the river. It's been held on the river four times in the history of the event. So the fact that it could be on a river and you'd be getting something really unique and different by getting these giant catfish out of the river, um, excited the governor's office as well. They thought this could be a unique opportunity, so they have encouraged us to continue looking at it. This is a long process. Um, I'm talking about 2021. We would be submitting a proposal in November of 2019. So the timeframe for us right now, I've got a couple of messages out to the coordinator with the Governor's Fishing Office to discuss a site visit. Ideally, what we'd like to do, I would travel down to the Governor's Fishing Opener in 2019 in Albert Lee, Minnesota, to see how that operates. And then we would hope to host a contingent from the governor's office and Explore Minnesota Tourism, and also some representatives from the D N R here in East Grand Forks in probably late May or early June. And at that time, they would take a site visit of our community, and it's really less of us showing what we can do for them, but really them showing us what goes into hosting a Governor's Fishing Opener. What's so exciting about this opportunity is they really encourage cities to make it their own and make it shine. And I think East Grand Forks could be a wonderful, exciting destination for this event, and we could show them some really neat, unique, unique parts of the city. So I'm asking for your support. I will keep everyone in the loop about this. Reed and Mayor Gander, we've discussed this a little bit. Like I said, it's, it's a lengthy process. I know it seems kind of early coming to you, um, now to talk about May 2021, but these events take a lot of time, so this would be a process that is already underway if we're interested in hosting. Like I said, we would submit a proposal in November, mid-November 2019, and I believe we hear the results of who would host the following May. So, um, with that, if anyone has any questions, thank you again for having me here. Um, feel free to ask me any questions now, or feel free to call our office.
Mayor, do you have anything?
Yeah. I think, um, one of the things we talked about was, uh, where would we put in? We could put in on the Red, and perhaps between now and then make some improvements to our launch facilities. We could put in on the Red Lake or both. I mean, really, there are some different opportunities in, in the two rivers. There are people who would tell you that they have places on the Red Lake River that, particularly on the opener or many other prime times, they can get you a nice limit of walleye. On the Red Lake River, um, we have individuals in our community who have a confidence level for that, and the governor could have the walleye, we could have the fresh walleye feed and all of that. But those monster cats, I would think, you know, it would be so distinctive and so unique as to kind of stand out from some of the other Governor Fishing Openers. And already, there is an enthusiasm for this. Our, um, our Chief of Police has indicated he would perhaps be available to help guide and, and direct some of this out on the water and whatnot. So, yeah, I think it could be a good thing. Um, we could even think about embracing our, our waterfront a little bit more. Reed and I talked a little bit, I guess with you as well, about some updates we could do even in the campground in preparation for this. So a lot of things could, you know, it would be the nudge that we would need to, to improve our recreation offerings along the rivers, and then we'd have them indefinitely after those things came in.
Mr. Grassley?
That'd be an awesome time to get the D N R down there to cut down those, right? So they could see the governor ride by.
Yeah.
Right? Along River Road.
They're receptive to that too, as you know.
That, yeah.
Yep.
Yep. It's happening so fast that.
Glad you brought that up again.
You're right.
There's, uh, there's some overgrowth along River Road, along 12th, where you can't really see the waterway anymore. And they're a lot, they're receptive to us clipping that so long as we put in some other natural vegetation in its place.
Excellent.
Anybody else have anything? Mr. Demers?
Um, just kind of thinking about the Red River side. Um, if it's something we want to do for 2021, or who knows, if you get on the list of 2022, or, um, we should start thinking about when we go down legislature this year even, maybe looking at talking to the D N R or whomever to try to get that project going because you got, you don't have much time right now to get that. And I, I've thought about it in my head, thinking, well, is it better to have it look the way it is now and have the governor see that and say, no, we need to enhance this and, and have him say yes? Or, but like you said, we're trying to put our best foot forward, and we want to showcase what we can do there. So I think, I think we should have, you know, I think January 30th is when we're, when people are looking to go down to St. Paul, I would have, I think we should come up with some, maybe not 100% concrete proposals, but, you know, 75 to 85% proposals so that we can pitch D N R to get them on board so that, you know, at the latest, we could have it done, you know, in 2020. If not, get it going this year.
Uh, simultaneous to Mayor and I meeting with Stephanie and Julie on this, I, just a couple weeks before we got together for lunch, I met with a few people from the D N R down at the boat ramp, um, to discuss with them what a timeline looks like to be able to replace that. And I was planning on trying to time that right with this, hopefully getting this on the work session ahead of that conversation, because I really do think this is a great opportunity to be able to leverage everybody involved in the state to be able to make improvements down in the park into that boat ramp. But you're right, Mr. Demers, the timeline and talking with the D N R about everything that needs to go into improvements to that boat ramp and the timeline that it takes, we're gonna have to start discussing it pretty, um, pretty actively in the next couple of months to be able to get all of the background work and the assessments of the rivers and the historical and everything that has to go into it to get it all in line and get something done. Uh, so I do have a lot of, a lot more information I can share in an upcoming work session to kind of get everybody up to speed on what we need to do to hopefully have our ducks in earl for all of it at the same time.
You know, one of the things you mentioned that the Governor's Fishing Opener people like to see is kind of a venue, like a chalet or a lodge kind of a feel, which we would not have here, yet we have restaurants and we have, um, a wilderness area that could be turned into such as that. Right? So in our minds, think about a place, whether it is closer to the rail bridge and the, and the boat launch, or whether it's closer to our park, or maybe even up along 12th. You know, where would be a gathering place where you actually would have meals and could set up tents and whatnot really to, to entertain? Because you're gonna have hundreds of people gathering for this thing, many of them from state and national media, and they're gonna want a staging area for all of that. So try to picture also, where does that take place?
Yeah, exactly. Uh, one of the primary pitches is to, or what they're used to with some events is having a venue, like if you've, uh, you know, you're at a resort right on the water, but that's absolutely not mandatory. In fact, in the R F P, you have to be within 15 minutes of the fishing area, which really opens us up. Uh, but I almost envision that as well, Mayor Gander, having almost your fishing village kind of an area where you can really have a, you know, a media base and some of the other bases. And as part of the weekend, there are some mandatory events, but there are also a lot of opportunities for us to have community events that are free and open to the public, and that could be a great spot for everyone to gather as well. Yeah, I love that idea.
Mr. Burchett?
Thank you. Um, when the mayor brought this up earlier, he talked about a financial commitment.
Yes.
And that's significant, but that there are, um, there are templates or whatever you use for, for, for raising money through corporate sponsorships and that sort, that sort of thing. Can you talk about that?
Yeah, absolutely. I can talk about that. Um, they have, they have a really wide-looking budget. Um, from the R F P, they expect, the Governor's Fishing Opener Office expects a budget of about $120,000 to $350,000. So that's a really huge gap. Um, the money is actually not a really big concern. Our executive, the Executive Director Julie Rieger and I discussed this, and especially based on the funding formula that they have and the number of sponsors that travel with the event annually, I'm not that concerned. I do have a call in to the director of the event to get some very specific financials before we would commit to putting a proposal together for this. It's imperative that we really study the financials with it. I want to make sure that this is something that is not a struggle for people to break even. It sounds like it isn't. And they have a number of traveling sponsors, and they have, Minnesota Tourism and the Governor's Office have sponsor packages already preset and put together, so it's basically like a formula every year, fill in the blank. And like I said, the number of traveling sponsors, I was looking at the Albert Lee Governor's Fishing Opener for 2019 website earlier today, and they already have some of their major sponsors plugged in, such as a platinum-level sponsor at $20,000, another one at $10,000. So, um, it might look like a big number, but there's a lot of sponsorships that are just kind of rollover sponsorships that go with it.
Who's on the hook for that? Is that the C V B or is that the city?
I imagine it would be the Convention and Visitors Bureau that would be on the hook for that. Yes, yes. I'm not asking for the city to come up with the funding for that. What is typical, what typically happens with this is you have an organizational committee that is put together that's on the hook for the funds. So we'll go into some specifics once we get the financials back from the Governor's Office, and we have a good sit-down and look at that, and also with the site visit here this spring, and we'll come up with that, but no intention to have the city on the hook for that.
Okay. And, and don't get me wrong, I think this is great.
Great.
I really do, and I hope we get it.
Thank you. Thank you for your support, and please feel free to, um, call me or email me if you have any questions at all.
Good.
I do have, I do have one more thing also. Um, we have a couple of lead organizations that serve Grand Forks and East Grand Forks. We have the C V B, we have the Chamber, and it's awfully nice to see you take the lead on a project that really is for East Grand Forks. It kind of puts your money where your mouth is, that you are an organization for this whole community, both sides of the river. That's cool.
Thank you very much. And I'm, I'm born and raised in Minnesota, and, boy, telling my dad that I want to go after the fishing opener, I've got to tell you, it's, I'm pretty proud of that. So if we could get the governor here, there'd be, I think my dad would be bragging pretty hard about that. And we, we at the C V B really do care about East Grand Forks and want to promote this community, so we were very excited that Explore Minnesota Tourism gave us this opportunity to look into it, because we keep, keep knocking on that door, and sometimes they don't listen, but sometimes they do. So we're here for your community as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to number three, request for 2019 tip amendment for Transit Capital Project. Ms. Ellis?
Thank you, Mr. President. This really should be a quick one. Um, back in March of 2018, we amended our tip from five vans, dileride vans, to a dileride bus. Um, because Grand Forks had received funding for the vans, uh, you approved that, we passed a resolution. It was amended into the tip, and then, um, when I went to put it into the federal, um, website, like their, uh, reporting site, it was inputted and not validated. They shut down the end of September, and their fiscal year starts again the beginning of October, so we missed out on their fiscal year. Um, in order for us to, uh, get that amendment completed, we have to move the project now from 2018 to 2019. from 2018 to 2019. It's simply a semantics type of deal. So I'm just asking for you to approve the resolution or move it forward so that we can get it into the new tip. It's, it's really just kind of a paper shuffling, but...
Let's get it done before they shut down.
I would like to, but it won't be because it doesn't go to the MPO until January, so...
Anybody have any questions?
I do have one other quick thing I'm hoping to bring to the council on Tuesday, the 18th. Came up on Friday. The state of Minnesota has additional funds left over in their transit, um, account. They're looking for grants to fund more buses and facilities. The city of Grand Forks right now, um, is doing a major renovation to their, uh, CAT facility. Um, what this would do was it would allow them to free up some of their federal funds. We would be requesting money for, um, some of the security systems, furniture, um, wall partitions, those types of things. What happens is, is our resolution would guarantee that it'd be an 80/20, 20% local match. It doesn't state that the local match has to come from the city of East Grand Forks because it would not. In order for us to ask for the, this grant, um, I have a guarantee that, um, what they have set aside for their bus facility and their local funds would be used towards this grant. It would just free up some of those federal dollars to possibly do something else. So it would be an 80/20 split, but the 20% would come from the Grand Forks local share that's already set aside. So...
Any command?
Thank you.
Number four, request to purchase truck. Mr. Stordahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, the city budget at $225,000 for a new dump, uh, dump truck slash sander for this year. We've been looking for a multi-purpose truck, a hook truck, and talking with a lot of different cities, visited a few different cities to see how it works for them. The intent of this truck would be so that we could, we could use it to sand, and we could also use it to, uh, to haul stuff as, as a truck. One of the other benefits would be is that we could stage roll-offs around the city as we're sweeping, use it for that, maybe down the road, use it for hauling out the green site. And, uh, so that's what we're looking for, and we're just trying to see if we could come up with a truck setup so that we could fulfill those needs, but also do some other things or have some potential for, for some other things in the future. One of the things we're talking about down the road too is we have a, a service truck for wastewater, stormwater stuff. We use it to pull pumps, it has a crane on the back of it. And, um, we could potentially have a flatbed with a crane and a service box type setup down the road too is another thing we're talking about, so that you could just hook up that setup and then take it and pull a pump. Right now, we can't pull all of our sewage pumps because they're too heavy for our current setup, and, but this is potential use down the road. So those are just some things that we're looking at, but for now, it would be a sander slash dump body on it, um, probably in snow and other debris. We had to do a lot of research to figure out all the particulars here, but we feel that we came up with a pretty good truck. So what the request is tonight is to purchase a freight liner. It would be through the state contract page for iState Truck Center. And, um, and then the additional stuff you see on there, swap loader is the hook that hooks the, onto the box or the body to pull it up. The sander body, controls, and tarp pricing. And a few, if, if council approves, um, of this purchase, sometime in the near future, we'll be back, um, to make the truck complete, I guess, to order up. We're, we're working with some different vendors and companies on trying to set up the box the way that we want it, the roll-off containers the way that we want them. But the truck, there's some lead time on getting it, so we'd like to, we'd like to get the truck ordered so that we can get it sometime, hopefully early summer, and get, get moving on this, so. Our recommendation tonight is to purchase from iState Truck Center, uh, one new freight liner, uh, for $96,794. And for Burt's Trucking Equipment, uh, swap loader, sander body, controls, and tarp for $92,803. Uh, I mentioned too that Burt's Trucking, uh, one of the items was on the state contract page for them, for, they're a vendor for one of the items, uh, but weren't for some of the other ones. So we got another estimate off the contract page through another vendor, um, and through Tollmaster, and they were actually higher than what's Burt, what Burt offered, Burt's offered us. So that's why we went with the recommendation, um, for them. And on to the $225,000. We would have something like $35,000 left after the purchase, which would go towards the, the, um, box, um, flatbed for the sander body and, uh, um, the roll-off. One, we're, we're thinking of one roll-off to start, so. Is there any questions?
Mr. Demers?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm for the purchase. I like the, the multi-purpose usage of it, but wondering more like budgetary. So this is a 2018 deal. If we carry over to 2019, do we have an issue, or can we just approve that other $19,000 along with this?
Carla could answer the question better for you. She'll be back next week, but she said that, that's the way she recommended doing it when I brought it to her, because those are questions I asked her.
What's the way?
Just how we, if we approve the truck purchase now and these items on here and came in 19, she said that that would work, so...
Yeah, if you, I just was saying like that extra $19,000, let's approve it this year and get it done with, I guess. Because we've already got our budget set for next year.
These are coming out of 18 budget. Right? Is that what you're saying?
Capital improvement.
Our capital improvement fund. So that was, since that's a revolving fund, I think that the payments coming in, there's going to be...
Yes, I think you're exactly right. Thank you, Megan.
Perfect. Henry?
I'd say move it on. He's improving services for the city. He's doing what he should do. And, uh, he's doing an excellent job, and we want him to continue to perform like he has, he has the equipment to do it.
Okay. Anybody else have anything? Dale?
I just have a question for Mr. Stordahl. If you go to a truck like this, do you have to have a different driver with a different type of license?
No, we should not. All, all our drivers have Class B license and a lot of them have Class A as well, so, yeah, no, we won't have to. Yep. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Uh, number five, discussion internship program. Mr. Murphy?
Thank you, Council President. Um, yeah, this one hopefully shouldn't take too long either. We've had interns here with the city, um, kind of off and on throughout, for many years now, um, predating me, um, coming here as well. And we haven't had a real, um, I guess formal outline or guideline of, of what we expect from interns, what we, what the university's role is and what our role is. Um, and so after having some discussions with Mr. Harsell from the, um, UND Public Administration Office there, um, they have a, um, and they've come up with an internship manual. I have reviewed that with him. I think it would work well for both of us. It's in, it's a non-binding agreement, but it sets up, um, what their responsibilities are and what our responsibilities are. And I like the idea that we kind of would set up with a timeline meeting where we would have a definite start and end date, and it would have, uh, it would coincide with a semester period with that. So I guess with that, we do have a candidate that looks like would be available for this spring semester, and I just wanted to bring this forward and see if the council was okay with that, and I would move it on that we would, uh, approve to enter into this agreement with UND.
I think it's a great idea. Anybody else have any questions on it? Mr. Mertweeton?
I think that he should be permitted to go ahead. Uh, the last man that was here went to work with, for Moorhead. Now, one of the things that, uh, happens, we've established a relationship with the University of North Dakota, and they just don't pick out anybody. It, it tells the general public that the city, uh, works constantly to improve management of government. That's a constant complaint of the general public. They know nothing about 90% of government, and they complain. But, uh, in this instance here, you get trained people, you save money, it's well-spent. And when you get into city government or any form of government, you've got a position of trust. And, uh, this also helps our administrator with that coordination as to new practices that save money. That's the reason we have a work session. And, uh, the work session for us has proved to be very, very effective. At least we're not throwing chairs at each other and saying bad things about each other.
I'm close.
We're like sweethearts.
Can we hug later? Um, I do have one thing on the internship. I think every fresh grad comes out a little overconfident. You think you know everything, but in fact, all you know is enough to step in and continue the learning. And everyone in our city can teach that intern something. So I hope early on, you know, you have this manual and this checklist and all of that. I hope you just prep them with the knowledge that every single person here, if you show, and, and our last one did, if you show some genuine humility and a willingness to learn, everybody in this building and outside this building can teach you something that will better equip you for real life after this place. That's a really big deal, you know? If they grab the phone when it rings, or if they, I mean, just whatever they can do to help the city run smoothly and to know then a little more about what each and every person does in the administrative office and in all our departments. Um, and it takes huge amount of humility, and it's kind of a slap in the face when you come out and realize, I really don't know squat, right? I have a degree and I have a lot to learn. If they got that out of their internship, along with some other little bit of training, that's, that's probably enough. That's my two cents.
Who was your first eye exam? It was you.
Thank you, sir. We'll move on to the next one if there's no other questions. Sounds good. Number six, consider renewal of agreement with Northland for truck driving program.
Yes, um, it sounds like we, it feels like we just spoke about this the other day, but it's back again, and actually it has been a year now. Um, and our, the agreement that we have with Northland for the truck driving program for utilizing that parking lot is up, expires next month, uh, here in July, so, excuse me, just January, wishful thinking, expires in January. So they would like to move forward with it at, with the same terms as, as last time. I have had some extensive conversations with Mr. Hushel, um, and in, in CTC about this. Um, nothing in their circumstances has changed as far as, um, the amount of, the, the students that they get, um, the, you know, the timing of it and that. So they're, they're still trying to keep this, this program open. They feel it's a benefit, um, and that it will help the, the, the community here. However, um, they are kind of nip and tuck as far as being fully staffed and fully, um, have a full amount of students. So with that, they said that they are in no more of a condition to pay any rent, um, for that this year than they are last year. So I guess with that being said, um, the, here at the city, we need to decide whether this is something we want to continue, um, and if we feel it is worthwhile to have them utilize that. I'm open for comments, and I have reviewed this fully, so I am, I guess I will answer any questions you have.
Anybody have any questions?
I'd say move it on, and I'd like to talk a little bit more about tech school.
Anybody have any comments on the trucking?
I guess, from my two cents on it, we've always had this little bit of a conundrum when it comes up. And I look at our, our tech school as serving the same people that the city serves. It's, it's one community, and if we can provide that for them, and we know that that program itself is able to continue, but it does not generate a tremendous amount of revenue for the school, but it's worthwhile. It's worthwhile to prepare truck drivers for truck driving, or maybe bus driving, or whatever else they might be doing. And so I think it's a worthwhile benefit to our whole community to have it, and if they're, if that program is not in a position to pay big rents, I would be very happy to have it continue about as it has to this point.
Okay, wait, I have one thing. I'm sorry. They are looking in the, the long-term. They do want to get a, a course out there. They are exploring grants, um, those type of things. However, that, what he said is that is more of a long-term goal. That's probably at least five years out before they would really see anything with that. But, uh, he did, uh, do want me to communicate that, that they are trying to get their own system up there, but it's going to be a while yet.
I'd like to make a few more comments to bring you up to date what the tech school is doing. Last semester, they had a 6% increase in enrollment. And as many of you were, uh, 82 to 83% of all students at the public school have taken at least one class, plus number of Sacred Heart. I don't have that number. But the, uh, one thing is they've had is the 6% increase was based on people who were 30 and 40 years old. Now, the second semester, they've gone up another 2%. And, uh, they're rated nationally as one of the finest tech schools in the country. Now, this tech school has been aggressive. Instead of waiting for industry and business, uh, to, uh, get engaged, the tech school is, is in the process at the present time, uh, working with many industries in East Grand Forks and Grand Forks and so forth, like American Crystal. And, uh, I've suggested to them, uh, that because of the, uh, tremendous amount of diesel engines in, uh, the area, everything is diesel, whether it's construction equipment or agriculture or anything else, and to have, uh, equipment shaped up and in shape as, timing as everything. If, uh, we put a two- and three-year diesel course here, uh, it would change the valley. Probably anything, uh, you could do, uh, with a tech school would be influenced as much as that. And I think if you take a survey, it'd surprise you how, how many engines there really is. The one thing about it is, uh, diesel equipment's extremely expensive, so we have to, uh, make sure it's maintained. You've got diesel engines that go 600,000 miles. Now, unfortunately, uh, the predecessor to this president, uh, sent the automotive course up to Seaford River Falls. Many of you were with me and we begged her not to. What I'm suggesting, at least for the present, that we, uh, push the diesel mechanic course. And, uh, the other thing in the future, uh, we should have a two-year civil, surveying and civil engineering course. Most, very high percentage of all tech schools in Minnesota, uh, have both of these programs I'm talking about. Uh, at the present time, uh, the tech school is working on a tailor-made pro, uh, business that's very substantial in the area. And, uh, basically, they're doing more of that. You don't have to ask this group of people up there, uh, for, uh, help. They're asking you, can we help you? Now, what's going to happen is we're going to have a well-trained, uh, workforce. We're scouring every corner to make that possible. What does that do? It changes the economy of the entire area. People are getting good salaries. You change, you change everything. You change attitude and everything. And if, if you can take and get the people to have a changed attitude, and it's possible, you're, you're going to have a wonderful community. Now, it's kind of an interesting thing. One of the things that's happening in East Grand Forks, we're getting more young children with families here. That tells you something. It tells you that the group of people that are right here today in this group, the, the department heads and city employees and members of the council are interested in improving the quality of life. And that should be your objective when you come on the city council. You're going to improve the quality of life. You're gonna improve the quality of life here and in the area.
Thank you, Henry. Any males have anything at this time on that parking lot? Now we'll move it on. Number seven, discussion on paperless packets and equipment. I wanted to put this on the agenda, discuss it more. I've had discussions with Mr. Murphy and Mr. Thompson and several of the council members and Megan regarding how we distribute and get information that's sent out to the council members and the mayor. You know, in the past, we've all know we get our packets delivered and, and getting that and getting all the, what has to be done in City Hall and what needs to be printed up, copied and sent out. Moving to a system that it's update into the present where we're, where we should be at, I think we need to look at going paperless and looking at ways to do that of having capability of having the council members and the mayor and have capability, having that on a laptop or whatever it may be. I wanna have the discussion on what people have thoughts on. I think it's something that, you know, Cory's throwing some ideas back at us for different things, but I wanted to have discussion on what, Mr. Murphy, go ahead.
I guess one thing, I just wanted to make sure, say we do have our, our two newly elected council members here as well, so since we've been moving forward, we need to get their opinion on that. I really think that the, the number one starting point where we need to find out is, does everybody, all the council members have Wi-Fi availability to them outside of the City Hall here?
Or hardline.
Or hardline, yeah.
Internet access?
Internet, yeah. I'm saying it's called, yeah, I guess, yeah, internet access. I'm saying he's calling it Wi-Fi, but.
What's the internet?
Tim, do you have internet access?
Yes.
Dale? Yes, I'm assuming so. You sit out in the parking lot by a library, Wi-Fi there? No, I'm just kidding.
Campground.
I don't think that's an issue. I think what we need to do is look at how to go about and have. I would like to ask Cory to bring forth some ideas of equipment that we could have that would be dedicated for everything that has to do with the city. The email is on there, links to go to our agendas and stuff like that, that is on a city-owned, so it's not on our personal equipment. Something that I think really needs staffed is, with that. I think that it's, probably should've been done a long time ago and we know what, you know, reasoning is why we didn't do it and, you know, it's neither here nor there. I think it has to be something they need to move forward with it and have proposals brought forth and say, okay, let's update how we communicate, how we take care of business and as a council member and discussions with, you know, the department heads and the city administrator and the mayor. I think it's something that I would like to see come forward.
Would you, just for the sake of all of us and whoever might be listening in, tell us again that what's the rationale behind it as for time and cost savings, you know, this, the staff that prints and the, and the environmental impact? And would you just take a minute to kind of throw out the back on why you think it's a big deal that we do this?
Sure. Did you wanna say something first, Chris?
Do you want me to help respond to that?
You can.
Sure. I'll use myself as an example. You know, we have, we have, it's a known fact that the police, if you chose to have it delivered to your house, they deliver it to your house. At some point in time, if your front door's locked, they put it in your mailbox. If not, they put it where you can get at it. It just so happened that my mail person has changed over a period of time and he wasn't very happy with the fact that there was, and I wasn't at home to get it when they deliver them. He wasn't very happy about it and he took it. And I ended up paying the, the fee to get the packet from, from the US Postal Service. That's one example. Another example is.
Or you get a nasty note, too.
Yeah, or you get a note. Another example is, you know, we went through a, a not-so-popular situation not too long ago as council members and my worry was that if I have my email being received on my phone or on my, let's just say it, on my other devices, that those could be easily subpoenaed and taken. And, and there we are without devices that are our own. And hopefully, we don't get involved in any of that stuff, but that's kind of where the discussion started between Mark and I.
Isn't, aren't our emails a matter of public record anyway?
Right. I think what I'm saying is, if you have a device like me, where I have my, my council meeting mail on here, I have other stuff on here as well.
Okay. They can take that.
And then, as a step back, too, I think Megan spends a tremendous amount of time assembling these.
Oh, yeah.
And that time, I mean, she already has the digital files available and then she prints and then she collates and then all of the additional steps. How much time would you say it takes to assemble and then distribute packets? What would you estimate?
I guess it depends on how big the packet is, but once it's put together, I think I spend most of my time waiting for the packets to print. And then it's throwing them in envelopes, throwing the labels on and getting them down to the PD, so.
I guess one thing I will say is that if it's later in the day on Friday and she's got a figure packet, she, she gets somewhat aggressive and we'll tell you that. Nobody will print anything until the rest of the.
Plus, we tie up a police officer to deliver these.
And I'll go, I'll say right away for the chiefs here is that the police department does not have a problem delivering them, so just everybody knows that. And, but I think it's, they have better things to do.
Yeah.
Yes. And they, if they, if they have time to go look at a dog, so I mean, that's what they, you know, an issue with a dog. But I think, you know, what you said, Mayor, it does take a lot of time from Megan to take away from what she's doing and could be doing. I think there's just something that we need to move forth and look at and, so it's just.
I've never had the police bring my package because I have bad memories of cops coming to my door.
When you were 12.
Mr. Demers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I agree. I think it's, it's, we live in 2018 and it's a mostly digital world, for better or worse. But we should, the, the reason why I think it's a good idea is because we should be thinking about how we process things digitally. And I think this allows us and we should simultaneously look at updating how our web stuff works with our, our packets, how our meetings can be synced. I know we've talked with, with Mr. Murphy about how they used to do it over in Belle Plain. And I think if you get on that process where everything is digital, everything is, you know, one format, then you can kinda, the nice thing about digital is you can start piecing those parts out and you make it uniform across platforms. And I think that's the real benefit. I think you don't have the issues of losing it and whatever. Now, as I get older, I want bigger screens because I need to, you know, see maps bigger and all those type of things, but you can do that once it's digitized, you know? I mean, you still get your packet in a eight and a half by 11 with some foldouts or whatever, but you still, if you can't see it, then you gotta go get it blown up anyway.
He can help you with that.
But I just, I think the move is a, is the right move, just from a directional standpoint, not just a process or anything like that. So I would encourage us to look at incorporating this move into a move to, to better host our, well, it could be on the next topic, too.
Could segue to the next topic.
Yeah, into our website and how we do that, so.
Mr. Vedder?
Thank you. I'm all for digitizing also. Whatever system we go to, there should be the capability then to have city charter available, the union contracts, the city budget, all that kind of stuff should be at our fingertips. So if we've got a question, we can pull it right up at any meeting that we're at.
And that's one thing I did bring up and discuss was, you know, on your desktop, have the charter there or have whatever ordinance is right there so you don't have to go into it. Just something that could be preloaded, if we could set up something, this is what everyone has on there, you can look at it. So, Mr. Grass.
And my, my comment is, personally, I'm not looking for a 24-inch laptop, Apple. I'm not, I'm looking for that. I'm just looking for something that is practical, is easy to use.
The ones I brought up to Cory and to Mr. Murphy are, you know, I think it was a 15-inch screen that I sent off and he sends them back that, you know, I know that Dave sent one forward, but something like that, and they're not that expensive to do. And one of the reasons to go with that would be, you know, Cory, maybe you wanna address how the long-term use of them and the capability of working on them as, as a IT person of setting it up for us.
Yeah, I guess I recommended to Mr. Murphy as he's made these requests, there's a few Chromebook options on there that make management fairly easy, fairly easy for the, for the users queues. And going on to the next subject a little bit, that is kind of, the plan is that we create a communications platform, not a website. And then these would be a, a way to access that.
Dale?
I could, I, personally, I could see it working better if it's used the way it's supposed to be used, where each council member is on there and they're talking about different things and then everybody, everybody, every member can see that and they can talk about it and they can understand it a little bit better, you know, what, what's being done or what you're looking to do. You know, because I know some people get together and they talk amongst themselves and then nobody else kinda gets to see that or hear that or whatever. That way, everybody could be on the same page. I could see that.
You'd have to worry about that. Opening logs, we couldn't do that. It'd be a, that'd be a violation.
Well, I wondered about that.
Yeah.
I thought of that, too, but I didn't know if it would.
Mayor?
In the meantime, too, for anyone listening and the media that are here, on our city website right now, you can grab a link to any one of our packets, any one of our agendas, any minutes of any of our meetings. They're all neatly organized chronologically and you can catch a link to any one of those packets. Nice, some of them 30, 40, 50, 60-page packets. And you just bring them into your computer, you can look at them, you can flip them around, whatever you wanna do. So any question you might have about a previous meeting, it's all right there. Or 334-page Viking pen.
So I guess direction toward the staff, would you want them to bring forth different ideas, options?
Yeah. And I guess, for what I've heard for tonight, I, I think what we'd be bringing forward is, I'd say, a minimum screen size of that 15. And then with, work with Cory and the IT department as far as what memory processor speed and all that kinda fun stuff would be. I would assume that most of you would want keyboard capability?
Either or.
Yes.
Either or.
Okay.
That's what I was gonna ask. Are you thinking more toward tablet or more toward notebook? But you're thinking maybe notebook?
That is what, based on previous conversations we have brought forward, we will obviously work at direction of this body here. Because we can see if there's, if there's a tablet that would fit that, that would have an attachable keyboard.
Bluetooth or whatever.
They're getting 15 inches, though, that's very large for a tablet. I was just warning you of that.
Yep. That is pricey.
Right.
Whatever it is, keep it simple for us people, it's not a real computer smartphone.
Right. All righty. Thank you. Appreciate it. Move on to number eight, this update on city website. Mr. Murphy?
Yes, thank you. Our, the platform that our current city website is based upon will be discontinued after this next year, so we'll need to upgrade to a newer format. We did have a meeting with Civic Plus and their representatives regarding that, the phasing of that out, what they're moving to, and I don't pretend to understand all of this, but what they're moving to is a content management system type base, which I guess, for what they're saying, simultaneously, can simultaneously publish all appropriate mediums, print, web, social media, SMS messaging, appies for applications, robocalls, all kinds of other things. So with that, our IT department has recommended that we look at developing a new, that new system in-house. Our current website has submitted a proposal to update and redesign our system for roughly $5,600, which was down from the original of $8,000. Our current contract with Civic Plus requires a 60-day termination notice prior to the contract's end date, which is August 18th, 2019, which means that we would have to give notice of termination prior to June 18th of 2019 to cancel our, our contract. So I guess with that, we're looking for some discussion from the council here, moving forward, because we will have to move forward with one way or the other. If we were going to do it in-house based on that deadline, if we're going to meet that deadline for termination, we would have, we have to put together here a timeline that we would like, that we would need IT to meet in order to make sure that we had that ready to go. I think it is in your packets. I will answer any questions as far as that timeline on that. But I guess with that, looking for any discussion if the, if the council has any preference for going in-house or staying with Civic Plus.
Thank you, Mr. President. On the timeline, is the two months the notice and you still have to serve out the rest of your contract or is that when you can actually terminate?
The, our contract would expire the, the August 18th, so that's the end of it. So we have two months prior to the.
But we have to notify them by.
Sixty days prior.
Sixty days prior, which is the June 18th.
So we, we're looking at a timeline that would have a turn-on date of August 1st or something.
Correct.
But as a deadline.
Like if I was adjusting the name.
Okay. So I know pros and cons. The pros of bringing it in-house are mainly that we can modify content easily ourselves. We'll have people on the ground, we'll be able to actually bring the input of our departments right to the people putting the content up and they can put their own content up. So those are all the pros, is the, the manageability of our, and you don't wanna call it a website, but our, what did you call it earlier?
Well, the website would be part of it, but you know, their content management system should become more of a communications management system.
Yes.
Everything from our agendas minutes to the, you know, to public, public notices, press leases. All get authored in that and get distributed in sync to whatever mediums was appropriate for the type of content being created.
And the big pro to farming it out, I think, is that that contractor would bring in a lot of creative input, artistic, creative input. They, they would have the potential to, to format and whether it's artwork, whether it's color palettes. I know you're very good with all this. So somebody convince us that the creative component is right here in City Hall, either maybe prepackaged that you can bring in or people on the, on the ground here that can do that.
And we, sorry, I'm speaking out of turn.
Good, good.
We already have artistic guidelines set by a branding study that was done by the EDA. It has a full color palette for us queues, font specifications, logo specifications, guidelines for photos. And I believe, you know, if we needed artistic help, you know, A2S would still be available for us to hire in that manner if we, if we so wish.
If I may, A2S is already, is aware of this situation that we're facing and has expressed a willingness to help as needed.
Cool.
So this a lot, like, are you talking like we'll be able to create like an app that our residents will be able to have or are we still looking just the web base?
That would be a very strong possibility. We'd have an API that would be able to access the information from.
So that if. They could go and say, it's snow removal here today.
Without of those, we'd be better off notifying people by like SMS or something because they don't go out there. Like I said, we're beyond the web browsing days. We, we have to, we have to push stuff out to people. They aren't gonna go actively look for us.
So, and you're, you're comfortable with, you and Chris are comfortable?
And you're comfortable with, you and Chris are comfortable doing all of that stuff?
Getting the framework together, and then determining where we need to go from there, yes.
Did you have something? Actually, I was going to say what kind of has already been said about A2S, and we've got, that's what we've, that's what we've paid for already, a lot of that. And I guess I might discuss this at EDA today, too, and I know there are pros and cons to going with a company that does this for a living and doing it in-house, and maybe perhaps not the sort of expertise that they would bring. But I've come around with the quality of product that the IT department has brought us with our television and the Facebook presence that we have. I think, I think they've earned a vote of confidence that we, you know, this is something that they're recommending, that we allow them to do, that they've told us, hey, we got this, and I'm willing to, I'm willing to run with it. I think they've earned it. I do.
I have one question. Do you tend to look at the timeline? Do you have any issues with timeline, or any suggestions that maybe would hinder or help or whatever?
Now that we have a defined timeline, we will make it work. We will make sure that we stay on task to meet the, meet the goals that were in there. I had it in front of me here, and I had a battery go dead, but...
So, are we talking about still content management and hosting with content being uploaded, or are you talking about, like, creating documents within the platform that are already pre-templated, pre...
Creating documents within the platform, which would create a constant branding. It would create constant publishing that's in sync on every medium. So whether you receive a printed notice, or you receive, you check our webpage, or you get a social media feed, or you've signed up for some sort of SMS alert.
Right. So how much training would you foresee on something like that?
That will probably be the biggest obstacle. More so than a technical aspect of putting this together, it'd be to train the users, which would be the same, no matter which direction we went with this, we'd have to train.
Right.
And then that's the other reason for determining to go in-house, is we can try to match workflows also, where we're not having to, where we're not having to conform to whatever the external entity wants us to.
Do you anticipate the possibility, well, there's always the possibility, because it's the web, um, do you anticipate or have any problems with incorporating, like, a payment system on there? Or I guess maybe that's a management decision, too. I mean, there's a whole realm of securities questions.
I would recommend we, right now, do what we're currently doing. Our payments are handled externally. There's PCI and a lot of other, we do do PCI compliance for the extent that we do handle payments.
Like through Water and Light, or are you talking about through, like, Park and Rec?
Both city and Water and Light do PCI compliance for the, but we do it in that we store no information, we store no payment information, we have nobody's credit card information, we have, you know, very limited access to that, that information. We start bringing that our liability for if there's a breach or something becomes...
Right, and you'd have a whole new audit structure.
If, you know, if payments become a bigger issue, I mean, we can revisit that, but...
Well, I just, I mean, part of me, when I think, you talk about branding and continuous flow, you know, we've had success with Park and Rec, but they've created a whole different website using a whole different platform that people like, and I'm not, but it's a different system, and you're going off of our site, and you're going off of, you know, what we are trying to do with every other department, you know? So my point is, is can you create that same environment in our website, still using an off-site payment program?
There are always doing that. We have to make sure we limit our liability, though, for mishandling payment information.
And I suppose user information and all those other stuff.
Yeah, there's a number of...
My point is, is we could go, all of a sudden, we'll be like, well, we want to do this, we want to do that. Well, we don't want to handle any of this information, so instead of having this continuous, fully branded site throughout, we're going to piecemeal out and have...
And then fortunately, payments is a small part of what people visit our website for, but if it becomes a bigger part, we do look at that.
It could be, because people don't write checks anymore.
Yep.
You know, I mean, it's, we need to be responsible to how people...
There are APIs with the vendors we use, that, you know, we can transfer information back and forth in a, you know, in a secure manner to allow for that within our own platform.
Okay.
Any males have any questions or discussion on the website direction?
I think we've got it.
Appreciate it.
One unrelated thing. I did sign the budget and levy proposals, so you do not have to brace yourselves to try to override some mayor veto in the coming days.
Entertained a motion to adjourn. Was it Pat Chininsky? Or Gasol, second my rebuttal? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion is carried, meaning it's adjourned.